28th, 2024, 3:02 PM. I want to be able to wish everybody a pre-Valentine's, so happy Valentine's. We're not going to see each other tomorrow, so. Uh, I'm gonna, uh, item sec- uh, second item is going to be the invocation, uh, be given to us by Councilmember, uh, Gray Connell. May, if you wish to join us for a moment of prayer, you can do so by standing up.
Heavenly Father, I just thank you for your blessings for the city of Odessa, and I ask for your guidance for the council today to guide us to make the best decision always for Odessa. I'd ask you to just to watch over this country and to bless us and protect us, and we thank you for your love. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
And go Chiefs.
To the red-rated quarterback.
That's why I said it. So who's, uh, no, no, nobody really cared who won, so whose numbers hit? That's all, that's all everybody cared. We're gonna move on to item three, Discover Odessa Quarterly Report that will be given to us by Amanda Johnson.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. My name is Amanda Johnson. I'm the Group Self-Specialist for Discover Odessa, and I'll be providing the quarterly report for Discover Odessa, October through December 2023. First, I would like to give a special thanks to Mr. Beckmeyer for attending the Unity Dinner last night and celebrating tourism. Discover Odessa appreciates your support.
We both made it back from Houston this morning.
This morning.
I appreciate you taking that on for us.
I had chicken.
Well, in October, we had a really good month, uh, thanks to the Permian Basin International Oil Show. It brought in 22,771 energy professionals, 750 exhibitors, and over 13,000 room nights. The economic impact was over 19,000, oh, sorry, 19 million. Discover Odessa provided a shuttle for the parking lot off of Goldar and charter buses at the parking, for the parking lot off of Ratliff. Um, also in October, we had our annual, annular solar eclipse, which tracked about 300 room nights. Um, we had multiple calls about visitors and the glasses. We had NASA come out, uh, they were from West Virginia, and they came to study the eclipse. They were actually on UTPB property, and they sent balloons into the atmosphere to measure whatever they measure in science. I'm not too sure, but. Um, assisted, we assisted three different reunions. One of the reunions, we did a tour for the micros, uh, sorry, Marriott Artifact, the Ector Theater, and then the Homemade Wines. In November, December, it's usually show, uh, slower for conferences, so we had a lot of sports. Our sports was still full in action, which we had jackalopes, youth jackalopes, Odessa College and UTPB men's and women's basketball, West Texas Knockout and US Boxing. We have new events that are coming up actually this month. One of them is the Texas Academy of Science Conference. This will be held at UTPB. This event will bring over 500 students and teachers. Discover Odessa will provide welcome backs. We have the Skills USA Texas, which is the D2 Leadership Skills Conference. This will be held at Odessa College, and this may become an annual event. It's actually being held, it was held previously in San Angelo, but now it's actually going to be held at Odessa College, and then if they outgrow Odessa College, then hopefully UTPB, so it'll hopefully become an annual event. This is actually going to bring 800 students from all over West Texas, and then we'll be providing welcome backs to this event as well. Another one is the National Championship Sports. This event is out of Arizona. This will be held, um, actually, we are hosting a youth baseball tournament. It's called Battle in the Basin at the Basin Sports Complex. We're anticipating 200 players to start. For marketing, Instagram was up by 750 followers. We surpassed our estimated Instagram followers that we projected by the end of the year. Facebook is up by 9.3%. Our KSI at the conference center is up by 36% and had over 3,200 engagements. Our top blogs for the quarter was October Fall Happenings, Sand Hill Stock Show and Rodeo, Rodeo Guide, New Year's Eve Guide. The top visited pages in the past quarter were, um, Event Calendar, Annular Solar Eclipse Guide, Holiday Season Guide. Our digital events, uh, advertisements, I'm sorry, we had total, uh, Texas Monthly Fall Guide. We did advertisements with Adara, which was with the solar annual, annular eclipse campaign. Our printed advertisements was Big Ben Texas Monthly Guide, Texas State Travel Guide, and Texas County, uh, Directory. And then on the report, we also have, uh, our team highlights from October, November, and December. And then our sports recruitment program, um, the syrup has gone from 100,000 to 76,000. Y'all have any questions for me?
Counsel, questions? Thank you very much. Great job. We're gonna move on to item four, Presentation on the Comprehensive Transparency and Ethics Policy for Tex- uh, Texas Municipalities. Mr. Beckmeyer?
I was actually hoping that that report would take a little bit longer because Mr. Harris actually needs the computer to show you guys.
Okay, so we'll just go ahead and we can come back to it.
Okay.
Uh, let's go ahead and go on to item five, Discuss Harmony Home Request for ARPA Funds. Ms. Bono? There you go. Come on, Carrie. How you doing?
No, no.
Okay, so do you want to wait? I can continue to move on. We can come back.
We can continue to move on. Yes, if that's okay.
Loving us.
I've got a new one in my office anyways. This would be a good reason to just, you know.
We're not any further behind, right?
I was waiting on the new, uh.
Yeah, that's, that's 24 months behind. It's coming with the chests.
We'll be all right.
It will be okay.
We're getting there.
Well, let, let's go ahead and just, while you're doing that, let's go ahead and move forward. Let's go up to item six, Discussion, uh, the rejection of all bids proposal for automotive tires. Mr. Adams? You don't need the computer for this one, do you? Okay.
Mayor, Council.
We need a booster, is what we need.
We submitted a RFP for automotive tires. We sent it out to seven vendors and only received three proposals back. All the proposals requested numerous changes, which would unstandardize our tires. We've got, we've, since we took it back in-house, we've got it down to three brands, and we've shortened the si- uh, compacted the sizes down. All the vendors, with the exception of one vendor, requested numerous changes, numerous substitutions, including recaps and numerous tire size changes. So I would just like to ask that we reject all of those bids, and then we'll gather it back up, redo the bid again, but put strict protocols as far as no changes or substitutions allowed.
Perfect. Okay. Counsel, we have any questions? Thank you for staying stringent on that. We're gonna move on to item seven, Discuss yearly preventive maintenance and warranty for ZOOL and cardiac monitors. Chief Chavez, how you doing, sir?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, I'm up here today to, uh, for your, for your consideration in approving our yearly preventive maintenance and warranty for our ZOOL monitors. This is an ongoing, uh, service that we do. The amount we're requ- or needed to, to, uh, continue with this service is $22,759.75, which we actually saved from last year, believe it or not, uh, close to $6,500 from last year's service. Um, this will be coming out of, uh, accounts, uh, maintenance, other equipment that we have set aside for this kind of.
Counsel, any questions?
How many monitors do we have altogether?
So we currently have 23. Uh, all our ambulances carry one, and so do our fire trucks.
23?
Yes, sir. ZOOL monitors, very expensive.
Sounds good. Any other questions? Jim, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to item eight, Discuss the use of water, wastewater contract to cover the cost of repairs of 20 line breaks the city has since the initiation of this year. Mr. Niles?
Yeah, good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Uh, at the time of submitting this agenda item, we had a total of 51 water main breaks scattered throughout the city. At the end of January, we ended up with a total of 54 breaks. Currently, we are short more than 10 positions in the distribution division, which is basically two full crews. We are not able to handle the extreme influx of water main breaks and leaks, sometimes up to eight active line breaks at a time. So I authorize Agardo Madrid and Associates under our current water and sewer contract on an emergency basis only to handle up to a total of 20 main breaks at an individual cost of $5,000 per repair. Therefore, I request that council authorize the use of $100,000 of our R and R funds under the current water and sewer contract PO to cover the cost associated with these line breaks throughout the city. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions? If it's necessary. We have a consensus?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Right, yes, sir. We'll move forward. Thank you. We're gonna move on to item, uh, nine. Discuss your approval of the purchase of 100 MSA G1 45, 4,500 PSA air packs for Odessa Fire Rescue. Chief, Richie, how are you doing, sir?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Um, Odessa Fire Rescue is requesting the purchase of 100 new air packs. Um, the ones we have now are reaching their end of life, um, their end of operational life, and it's gonna start costing us more money to repair those than it would be just to purchase new packs. Um, the reason for the large purchase is if you break it up into smaller purchases, then your technology can outrun. If you buy them four years from now, the technology doesn't keep up with those, and so they're not compatible, and we've actually had that issue here recently. So we're just gonna replace them all and, and get it done with, and this will come out of our capital, uh, budget.
Is it coming out of the capital money?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is for the 24 budget, right? Do you have any from last year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Counsel, we have any questions? We have a consensus to move forward?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Uh, are we ready to go back? We're gonna go back to item four, Presentation on the Comprehensive Transparency and Ethics Policy for the Texas Municipalities. Mr. Beckmeyer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When, the first day that I spoke to you all, when I pretty much interviewed with you all, from then on, from then till now, I think everyone can see that I'm all about transparency and accountability, and I believe that this council is too. So what I've, there's a organization that I've been connected to a time or two over the, over the, in the past, that basically what they're gonna tell you about today is taking the normal statutory transparency and accountability that we have and saying we can do even better and raising it to a higher level. And this is a council that I believe can, can achieve that. And so, Mr. Armstrong, and presented by Mr. Harris today, uh, are gonna give you a quick presentation on this. It's the Texas Government Accountability Association, and, uh, Mr. Harris was the chief of staff for Congressman Lance Gooden. He is also chief of staff for Senator Don Buckingham, and has been working with localities. Him and, and Mr. Armstrong both have been working with localities, municipalities, counties, uh, whatnot for quite some time, and as soon as, and I can keep talking and
Take a chance. Hit okay.
Hit okay.
Hit them on. See?
I don't know.
Not that okay.
No, just, no.
Nope.
There we go. I'll be right there. I got you.
Landon, go over there before they break it. Landon's with every penny. Man, it's, it's the wiring now.
So, again, this will, we've talked some about the task force, and this ties in real good with the task force. Uh, how do we get to this greater accountability? Because people are giving you all their money to be, as Councilman Thompson's told us, to be fiduciaries. This is, this is not our money.
Well, we're finally here. Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Beckmeyer, for that introduction. Again, my name is Aaron Harris. I am here with Texas Government Accountability Association, and, um, you guys should have received some info in your packet on that. But, um, I'd like to just kind of walk through and talk about who we are, what we do, and, and why we think it's needed. And so, um, TGAA is a, um, government association set up under the, um, I actually have this in the presentation, I'll get there, but real, as a way of background, we have a board, uh, currently of three, three, um, previously elected officials. One is, um, Matt Kraus. Y'all may have heard of him in the legislature. He, um, recently retired, but he was out of the Fort Worth area. And then we have, um, Anthony Wilder, who was on the Carrollton Mayor Pro Tem there, and then, um, Kathy Wheat. So that is our, is our board. We have a bunch of other folks kind of all working on this, and, and we started from the premise that, um, if I can, there we go. Yes, sorry. I'll get there eventually. So, you know, TGAA is started based upon the principle that we find that it's best, uh, in the best interest of the public to have transparency and ethics at the local level performed by a trusted third party. Why? Just, I'll give examples as we go through this thing, but obviously Odessa would never do any of these things. But, uh, across Texas, we find that, um, you know, from time to time, there are issues that break the public trust. And ultimately, this is a government for the people by the people, and everything we can do to increase that trust and increase that transparency and those ethics, um, is, is better governance for us. Um, additionally, we see a lot of times where certain things just aren't in writing, aren't in policies. For example, a lot of cities and counties don't have recusal policies that common sense says that if your son is trying to get a contract, I'm not picking on you, but just pick somebody. If your son's trying to get a contract with the city, you should recuse yourself from that. You'd be surprised how many cities don't actually have a written policy to that, to that regard, right? And you go, well, why should we need to? I mean, it's obvious. Well, you think so, but it's not always. Local government is the government that affects our lives more than any other government. I say that as somebody who has worked on Capitol Hill, as, uh, Mr. Beckmeyer introduced, I've been a chief of staff at Capitol Hill, I've been a chief of staff in the Texas Senate. I do a lot of work in local government. I will tell you, local government is where it's at. Local government is where people's lives are affected. When I was in DC, we, we'd be voting on bills day in, day out, and nobody back in the district had any idea what we were doing. Unless it was a big bill, you know, like Obamacare or NDAA that year or something like that, otherwise people had no idea what we're doing. But things you guys do here every day affect whether or not I get a speeding ticket going down the road or rolling that stop sign coming out of this parking lot, right? So those are the things that really affect our lives. So what is TGAA? It is a Texas Government Accountability Association, is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization that seeks to bring broad-based support. Um, and it is, um, founded under the, um, Interlocal Cooperation Act. Uh, so if you're familiar with, with that, and Texas governments can set up interlocal agreements, um, and, um, between various government entities, in this case, any local political subdivision can join TGAA. So our, our target market, if you will, audience, is cities, counties, school districts, uh, things like that. It's local political subdivisions. So our membership is comprised of two things, uh, interlocal agreement, as I just mentioned, and then the actual comprehensive transparency and ethics policy. So I'll walk through a couple of those. So the ILA itself is established, as I mentioned, in accordance with the Interlocal Cooperation Act. It's solely for transparency and ethics policy. There's, um, no waiver of immunity by the, uh, entity that joins, of course. It establishes dues, which yours are waived, um, for year one. After that, the dues are 20, 20 cents on the population, and then establishes a public's right to enforce arbit- arbitration or injunctive relief, uh, sorry, it only, it provides injunctive relief only, meaning the only thing that they can do on the enforcement is if you're not following the policy, somebody can file a complaint and basically, um, seek injunctive relief to have you follow the policy. So the next is, let's talk about what's in the policy. So the policy itself has a couple of sections. The first is, um, transparency and ethics, and, and it has a lot of things. Some of these things you'll find that you might already be doing, some of these things you might be talking about doing, some of the things you might not be doing at all. So I know the first two, for example, you guys do, which is post your CAFR in your, uh, annual financial audit, post it on your website, like, great, we ought to do that. One of the things we found is the, the next one, uh, the third one, third, fourth one down number four, is when you have those audits and, and you discuss them, let's say they, the auditor brings the report to you in the city council meeting in, you know, first of June or whatever, um, or they complete it in June, you discuss it in July, whatever it may be. Um, give the public the opportunity to, to, to ask questions of the auditor of that audit. A lot of times, you know, you guys have an opportunity to ask those questions, uh, the seven of y'all, and that's great, and you should, and you should be the first, uh, line of questioning, but we also think, um, the citizens should be allowed to ask questions of the auditor. And, um, and so that's something you probably don't have in your policy currently. Um, one is conduct, another is conduct an efficiency audit. As you know, that's different than a financial audit. I think in talking to Mr. Beckmeyer, you guys are already doing a lot of those things, uh, right now. Those efficiency audits have, have found to be very effective and, um, very eye-opening for cities and saving money. Um, number five, all vendors must disclose any potential conflicts. Um, conflict of interest disclosure required for elected officials and city officials related to affiliate, affiliate employment, uh, zoning variances. So if you, if you, uh, Mr. Mayor or your brother-in-law or sister-in-law, should you have one, gets a favorable zoning audience from the city, I think that should be disclosed to the public, and the policy, uh, requires that. Uh, contracting services, obviously, or the sale of services or assets to the city, uh, by city officials or elected officials. Um, again, these are things that most of us would say are common sense and should be happening, but I find most cities don't actually have policies for this. Um, and then persons speaking before the council must disclose financial payments from the city. What does that mean? Means if I get up here and I'm speaking at a city council meeting about, um, say, a, a new ordinance you're wanting to put in, in force related to, say, landscaping, and I'm the vendor for the city that does your landscaping, and it has to do with watering restrictions or something, that's fine. I still have the, the right to, to, to speak, but I think the public has the right to know that there's that added motive there in that, in that speech, if you will. Um, city body meetings, all meetings of the council, as well as boards and commissions of the city, shall be fully subject to Texas Open Meetings Act and the Public Information Act without restriction. So why, you know, this is something that, again, I, as far as I know, you guys haven't done, but a lot of cities, what they'll do is, you know, your city council meeting is subject to Toma and Texas Open Meetings Act. But, um, if there's something uncomfortable that you don't like, and you don't want everybody to know, you'll set up a, an ad hoc subcommittee and just say that, that those subcommittee, that subcommittee is not subject to, uh, the Open Meetings Act and to shut out the public. So we've seen this recently. I'll give an example that's, that's not city-related, but everybody can relate to. Across Texas, we've had a lot of school boards dealing with books that, that some parents don't think should be in these schools, and so these schools have turned around, set up ad hoc committees, stacked them with, with people that they've required them to create, to sign nondisclosure agreements, to be in that committee. And this, this works happening on behalf of the public school district, which is a local political subdivision should be subject to the citizens completely behind closed doors. And so what we're saying is if you're gonna be a member of TGAA, you will abide by Toma for all your committees, subcommittees, et cetera. Um, I don't think that's a controversial position, but you'd be surprised how many people think it is. Um, all I, all council meetings will be live streamed and recorded. Again, you guys are already doing that. Um, all items discussed in executive session shall be listed in a public agenda and voted on by council to be discussed during executive session. So what this means is, uh, that you'll, you'll disclose to the public what you're gonna discuss as a line item in your agenda in an executive session and discuss those. You'd be surprised, uh, maybe not, how many, uh, how many entities don't do that and are discussing things an executive, the public doesn't even know about. Lastly, it's kind of miscellaneous on there. Publishing a citywide org chart on your website with the org chart, who, who reports to who, et cetera, so that the public can quickly access and see who is, uh, who's where and what the, what the city structure is. Building permit procedures clearly posted on your website. I think Odessa already has a good job of doing that. Um, and I believe they're doing a new website that's gonna be, um, even more transparent on that, as well as number three, which is, uh, clear system on the website to submit and track, uh, open records requests. Those can be pretty, um, pretty hard sometimes. Some cities don't, don't allow you to track them, et cetera. So, um, again, these are all just good ethics and good, good transparency for the citizens. Next, on ethics, mandatory recusal by council where conflicts exist. I think I've already mentioned that one. Um, elected and city officials prohibited from using city property unless generally available to the public. So for example, uh, um, we have examples for just about all these in here, but during COVID, there was a, a, a particular government, uh, city hall that was, all city buildings were shut down in this particular suburb, um, and somehow one of the city council members was able to have a graduation party for his son at city hall. Well, as, as a member of the public, that wouldn't have been allowed, you know, not even available for me to rent, much less have that facility for reception. So if it's not available to the public, generally available to the public, then it shouldn't be, uh, uh, available for use or rent to, um, to elected officials or city officials. No person employed by the city shall report to someone with a family relation without approval by the city council. Uh, I think this is pretty self-evident, but if, you know, if you're married, you shouldn't, uh, be his or her boss. Um, a general prohibition of gifts, which I believe Odessa already has, uh, you guys do a good job on that. We do have obviously some, some exceptions on those. For example, none of this, uh, none of this policy, uh, applies to your TC-regulated campaign activities, right? So say that off, off the board, then that's in the ILA, but it's also reiterated in this ethics policy section of the policy. Um, and then probably one of my favorites might not be y'alls, but a prohibition on lobbying the city for two years after you leave your position on council, or if you're a city staffer, um, same thing. So TGAA, just in summary, again, there's a lot more in there. Those are just kind of highlights through the ILA and the policy. Um, so we, again, promote transparency and ethics policy. We'll obviously be doing legislative updates and, and I should say here in the legislative updates, we'll also have from time to time, you know, court rulings that affect these things that we'll have to also update our member cities on. Um, before I got into this, I never realized how often that happens, um, but it can actually be hard to track all those court updates. And then just good governments, good government, uh, best practices. Then, of course, training, elected official workshops, Robert's Rules training, a lot of people need help with that. And then, um, policy and legal guidance coming is something we're developing, um, so to come soon. So in summary, kind of TGAA brings transparency, accountability to forefront. That's very important to the public, and TGAA helps members focus on core functions of government. Uh, and, um, transparency, make sure transparency is first and foremost critical foundation towards governance. And one of the things I will say is, um, over the last three years, four years during COVID, we've really seen a shift in this, right? It was, uh, prior, prior to COVID, you couldn't fill an elevator with people that really cared and paid attention to local government. All of a sudden, when they started getting told by their local elected officials that they couldn't go to a park or this or that, now everybody cares about local government. And the investment required on behalf of the public to educate themselves on what their local governments are doing is just, it's so much greater, right? They can go home and turn on CNN or Fox News or MSNBC or whatever their poison pill of choice is and hear what's going on in DC, but it's really hard to find out what you guys and the school board and the county are doing. And so this is really our goal here, is try to help make these things accessible to the members of the public. And so, uh, what you have here is an opportunity to hold the city of Odessa to a higher standard of ethical conduct and public transparency to the taxpayers. This is something that, that is different than what other, other folks are currently doing. Um, one of the things that will result in this is, is less, uh, labor costs towards open records requests, as many of the repetitive requests will already be posted online. And the city of Odessa can be a leader in modeling the higher standard of transparency and ethics, um, across Texas, uh, instead of following. So with that, I appreciate your time, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer either here or later, whichever your preference.
What are the steps to move forward?
Great question. Um, essentially, you guys would vote on it and then just sign the ILA and the transparency policy, and, uh, you, you guys would become members. Um, that's pretty much it.
And you become a member, uh, you know, in creating these policies, what is the, uh, the trigger mechanism for the public if, let's say, one of these steps in being a member, what are the trigger mechanisms for the community to hold the, the city accountable?
Great question.
Based on these policies that it adopted?
Great question. So, um, first off, let me say, we do have a side-by-side that I can provide all of y'all, um, uh, whenever, today, whatever, showing the policy versus what you guys already have in your city charter and ordinances, so that you can kind of see like what will actually change, okay? And, um, and so we do have that for you, so you can take a, a side-by-side look.
So, so we'll be able to see what, if, if anything conflicts with the charter and things of that nature?
Correct, or what you're not doing that, that you would have to do. So for example, um, I believe, quote me on this, I believe y'all don't have a written, uh, conflict vote requirement.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
Uh, uh, I believe, I believe off the top of my head, that y'all don't have a written policy on conflict votes for council members.
What do you mean conflict vote?
Uh, recusing yourself from a conflict. Yeah, conflict of interest, sorry. Conflict of interest vote.
It, it, it's cloudy.
Okay, so that's an area where on our side-by-side, we'll show you like what, what you have versus what you would have to do. So, so the first thing would be, obviously, you need to adopt all those things, and you'd have obviously time to do that. You're not gonna do that overnight. Take, you know, that, those would be some steps. But to your question, once adopted, um, if a citizen finds that you're in violation, obviously, my, my, my logical goal would be that they would come and talk to you guys about it, say, hey, this is supposed to be in your wa- most of the stuff is just disclosing it on your website or disclosing it to city council, right? So none, nothing that you would be in violation of is all that hard to fix, okay? So the first goal would be to So the first goal would be that they come and talk to you. If they don't, then the second step is they would file a complaint with us, with TGAA. And then we would work kind of between them and you guys, say, hey, y'all can get this on your website or what. Should they choose not to do that, they can either go to arbitration or file in district court for injunctive relief. That's it. Meaning, the judge is going to say, you gotta put this on your website or you don't. There is no, no financial remedy, no money, nothing like that. It would just be injunctive relief, saying y'all are in violation of this policy. But that would be after they talked to you guys, talked to us. I can't imagine, like, we've gone through, we've had this conversation, we're like, can't imagine what in this policy after them filing a complaint with us and us all talking it through. But if that were to happen, yes, your worst case scenario would be them seeking a judge to get injunctive relief.
This is a question because we've, what we've gone through with the Open Reading Record Act and those requests. We're required to put all this on our, on our website. Do we have the capabilities? Do we have the personnel to be able to have that, you know, and be consistent with it? I don't know if we can answer that today, but it's something that, you know, pops into my mind because of what we, the city's gone through in the past. Two, in the executive session, there are some things in executive session that are, not confidential, but contracts, personnel, we exactly can't put that out on a blurb. You know, we can put a topic, but we can't actually explain it.
That, that's right.
So what's, you know, if we did that, what's the purpose of the executive session? So is there conflict in the wording? Because that's, that's what popped out to me right there. You know, if we're doing a personnel matter or lawsuit and things of that nature and we have to negotiate, we actually can't put that on a blurb.
Right.
And so.
So state law dictates which, which those items are?
Yes.
And in those cases, you would have a generic place item on your, on your, on your agenda.
Okay, I'm just trying to clarify that we're not stepping over that.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to speak over you. What we've seen is the reason that's in there, we, we actually didn't have that. We had an elected official ask us to add that. And then after that, that elected official brought it to us, we started talking around, we found this was a bigger problem than, than we realized, which is, again, not Odessa, but some cities and some school boards, et cetera, have board presidents or mayors that are discussing things in executive session that weren't listed in the agenda. Those council folks who often are in the minority, you know, feel in a position where now their constituents don't even know this stuff's going on. You know, and, and now we can get into a whole, there's a whole side conversation that we shouldn't have at this workshop about what the AG opinion is about discussing things that are in executive session, right? The AG has, has upheld numerous opinions that any member of the council can talk about what happens in the executive session. They just can't record it, okay? But with that said, I do feel like having the agenda items on the agenda and everybody be able to say, we're aware this is happening. But you're right, there are things like, say, personnel matters, it's going to probably be about that generic. And sometimes like a land deal or something, okay? But it's listed on there and we can go back and point to it and say, no, I as mayor put it on there and y'all saw it.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, we're going to discuss what we're going to do to John. It's going to be personnel matters dealing with personnel.
Okay. And the reason why I'm asking is because the city's gone through two lawsuits in those two cases. It was a three year venture and then prior to council being, the city, the citizen being sued for not reading the statute correctly. That was a $10,000 hit. And so that's why I'm just asking. I just don't want to go down this and then we start finding conflicts.
Yeah, the, the goal is not have an, an agenda says this executive session, you get back there and you're discussing 12, 15 different things and the public has no idea, right? Like, that's.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's not happening here. It's just, yeah, we, 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 we hold the letter to the law and we stick, we stick to it. That's all the questions I have. Anybody has any other questions?
Yes, I have a couple. If you were going to respond to him.
If I can make a comment about what you just said. You know, it's not happening here. You're absolutely right. And one of the things, if I can say this and give me a little bit of freedom here and not offend anybody. But one of the things we are doing is looking for cities that are willing to, to do some things that are different. So obviously, we're not going to, or we're trying, but you know, the cities that are doing these things are not receptive to these types of things. So it's one of the reasons we're here. And one of the things I would, I would point out is you guys won't always be on the dais. And, and it's, it's good to put these things in place because at some point, you guys won't be on the dais. Let's make sure that we do this for the citizens, not just for today, but for four, five, six years from now.
And that's exactly as I seen, seen about this, is holding that accountability going forward. And you, you found the council is wanting to do things different. Mr. Vasquez?
Would you mind scrolling back? And Mr. Harris, thank you for your presentation, first of all. Would you mind scrolling back to your page that headed up transparency and ethics? Number five. Are there consequences of some sort if a vendor fails to disclose potential conflict?
No, I mean, some of the things obviously are scouts honor, right? So what we envision there and what's in the policy is you guys would have a form, a disclosure form, says a vendor, the vendor shows up to speak at, at city council, they would, they would fill out that disclosure form. Prior to speaking, submit that. But yeah, if they don't fill it out, there's nothing, I mean, yeah.
There, there is one consequence, you don't use them.
Okay. And the other question I have is if the city of Odessa embarked on being a member, is this an annual decision made by council to continue membership or at any time we can get out of the membership? You know, because you mentioned 20 cents per, I guess, residence, yeah, on an annual basis.
Yes, so you can exit. What, what you're going to agree to though is if you exit, you're going to put it, put it before the public and let them know you're doing that and have a public discussion about that. So, you know, well, obviously, I think it's really hard to go to the public and say, we're gonna, we're gonna back away from transparency and ethics. And so in order to hold future councils to the standard that you guys agreed to, like, yes, but you can't.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and, and when you look at it over, it's not just councils, it's vendors that are, they're working with the city. It's current and future employers, employees, because there's going to be continuing change. And so one of the biggest things that we deal with in the city of Texas and this nation is bureaucracy and unelected officials and holding that accountable. And as you try, the dais change, you need a mechanism that has continuity and raises the bar. And so, I mean, this is interesting. Any other further discussion or information the council would like to have? Yes, sir.
So number five, all vendors must disclose. So the conflict that's created there hypothetically to Mr. Vasquez's question. The question I would have on that is, is it with, it's going to be with a staffer, city council member, city official? You might have a problem with that employee that you might be able to have a policy on enforcement, because they should have disclosed that as well. I'm assuming, I'm assuming the conflict is with somebody on, on staff or, or council, right? So there's two sides to that conflict, I guess, want to point out on that.
Yes, and, and I think that you could come across that situation, all, all three scenarios, because it's not just the conflict. There's policies that are in place right now that when the conflict occurs is when you, when the vendor contacts the city and vice versa. So there's a timeframe that goes back. Oftentimes, that's not, that's never been really looked at very hard, hasn't been looked at, definitely hasn't been applied in that sense. And so, and the thing is, is that when there's violations and say that, you know, violation takes occurs, there is no mechanism other than, yeah, you don't use them, but, you know, it, it's, it's a system that's been around more than 50 years. And, and I've always said this, the bigger the policy book, the more you're going to violate policy.
That's right.
And so, but, you know, the thing is, there's never been a mechanism for accountability to further raising the bar. This is interesting. I really, I really like that because it, it sets in place something for the future, far after we're all gone. Mr. Jones?
Mayor, I was just going to say you may want him to do the, you said a side by side comparison?
That would be good.
And maybe invite him back in a couple of weeks or a month?
Let's do it, let's do it sooner than that. I don't want to, can we do it sooner than that? Could you?
I can give it to you now and y'all can review it and then we can schedule follow up whenever you want.
Let's do that, John. Okay. Council, any other further questions? I like it. What do you guys think? Oh, come on now. Y'all, y'all slept it. There we go. We got a thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Everyone on the task force likes it, right?
I appreciate it. Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you, council. Thank you, it was rare.
We're going to move on to item five, discuss Harmony Home's request for ARPA funds. Carrie?
Thank you.
You know how to work it? Do we need a landing out here? Oh, this is a capital project.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council for having us here today. My name is Carrie Bron. I'm the Executive Director at Harmony Home Children's Advocacy Center. With me today, you just met Ms. Rita Mata. She handed you a packet with some more detailed information as well as a very special guest, Angelina Aranda. We're here today to really talk about our initiative in expanding Harmony Home to make sure that all of our children are served under one location. And so in order to do that, there's a couple of things that are coming down and our Board of Directors and our staff and our community and partners are very, very excited about. And so for those of you who may not know who Harmony Home is, we work with kids who are physically and sexually abused. And so our mission has always been to break the silence and heal the hurt of abuse. The majority of our kids that we see in Odessa unfortunately are sexually abused. And 90% of every single child that walks through our doors, they know their perpetrator. So that's the family members, it's close personal friends, it's teachers, it's acquaintances of the family members. And so we've reached a point in our lifespan that we've expanded and we've outgrown not only our space, but our programs that we currently offer. We've served Odessa since 1993 as a children's advocacy center. And, but before that, we served as an emergency shelter. And that emergency shelter was provided by the city of Odessa with the location that we're currently at. So for over 44 years, we have been in the business of protecting kids throughout Odessa and the Permian Basin communities that we served. In 1993, when we became an emergency shelter, we actually were able to purchase the land and the lot immediately behind us from the city of Odessa so that we could continue to support our families and ultimately our mission of protecting and helping to heal. So this was the generous support that you guys provided or the city of, of Odessa provided in 1993. You could see the building and then the lot immediately behind us. It still stands empty today. But that's about to change. So now, 31 years later, are we celebrated on February 1st, our 31st anniversary? And so as of February 1st, we now serve seven counties throughout the Permian Basin. On average, we serve almost 1,000, anywhere from 1,000 to 1,050 children and caregivers walk through our doors. Our programs have expanded to include mental health, advocacy, victim services, child sex trafficking initiatives and protocols, as well as education and community awareness. Our goal has always been to ensure that every child that deserves to come through Harmony Home is able to come through Harmony Home. We're providing every single effort that we can to protect them and every single service that we can to ensure that they're safe and they're healthy. And we do this every single day that we work, whether it's 3 o'clock in the morning or 5 o'clock in the evening. And we do that with our partners. We partner with Odessa Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, the Prosecution, DA's office, the Medical Department at Medical Center Hospital and the Department of Family Protective Services, otherwise known as CPS. So in order to identify and make sure that we're meeting the capacity and the needs of all of our children, all of our families, we want to update our facility because we've outgrown our facility. We are now currently in two locations in Odessa as well as offices in Monahans and an office in Pecos. So that vision that I showed you earlier of the initial building that you guys provided to us for so many years, we now want to update to increase the space so that we can provide mental health and education and community awareness. Because those really are the two arms in our organization that continue to grow. They've continued to grow for many, many years. When we started our mental health program in the early 2000s, we had one therapist. We now have four and a half, one being bilingual, and she's more part time, as well as interns. Our education and community awareness has grown significantly. So we're, instead of just adults, we're now serving children to the capacity of about 15,000 per year, getting into the schools and educating. So this will be what our facility looks like once it is completed. And the initial campaign is done, you will ultimately see a 360 change where our front door will now be at Lincoln instead of in the little parking lot tucked away behind the crisis center. And it's going to include that lot as well as additional space to meet the capacity of our mental health needs. This is the indoor of our facility and the change that it's going to increase so that we can have all of our staff back under one roof. We can have our mental health program, an entire hallway dedicated to them and all the modalities of therapy that our children need in this community to heal from the abuse that has been caused to them. We're also going to have space for SANE. For those of you who don't know what a SANE is, that's a sexual, a nurse, a sexual assault nurse exam. It's currently done at Medical Center Hospital in the ER room. Triage is done there, the SANE is done there. And it's very cumbersome and not very victim friendly or trauma informed, to be honest. We actually had a conversation starting yesterday with Medical Center Hospital so that we can have a SANE at Harmony Home. And no, none of our kids no longer have to go to Medical Center to do this. We're also going to have space for our partners to house. So our Odessa Police Department, our sheriff, our prosecution and our CPS will be right there in that facility, ultimately providing wraparound services for all of the children and the caregivers that will come through our doors and continue to come through our doors for generations to come. Our mental health program and is, which is why I'm here today, will increase significantly. Right now, it's down the, if you've ever been in Harmony Home, we have a hall that leads into the conference room and that hall right now is dedicated to our mental health program. Every space is full. We've got, like I said earlier, four full time therapists and one part time bilingual therapist and one intern. But we can easily grow that with that space added and with y'all's support. So in order to really provide every child, every service, every effort, every single day, we need some additional modalities of therapy. We need that space so that we can provide that. Currently, we only provide two forms of therapy, trauma focused cognitive behavioral therapy, otherwise known as TFCBT, and the eye movement desensitization and reprocessing. I know I said that wrong, but EMDR, as most of everybody knows that. Those two forms are currently researched and evidenced back that they are the most proficient when it, in working with kids who have been abused. However, we see a large amount of kids that are six and under. And so those kids don't recognize TFCBT currently or EMDR because they're either not old enough to accommodate that or they're just not ready for it. So they need art therapy, they need play therapy. We only have two play therapists in Odessa and there is a long waitlist for our children. So we have to refer out. And when you think about a child who's finally made the commitment to tell a trusted adult that something is going on in their home or something is happening to them that should not be happening to them. They come to Harmony Home, they get the forensic interview, and then they have to be put on a waitlist or they have to be sent to another organization to get the services. That is not providing wraparound victim friendly services. It simply is not. We don't know if they're going to get the services that they need at these other organizations. I'm not saying that they're bad organizations because we have great counseling facilities. But we don't have any say in what they're doing, how often they're going, are they accommodating? And are they healing from what they have? In-house therapy and being able to provide that will allow us to assess and make sure that these kids are getting healed. We also have a problem with problematic sexual behavior. For those of you who don't know what that is, those are children who have been victimized as children and they go on and they start victimizing siblings, cousins, other children, because that's what they know, that they haven't been taught differently. Research shows that if children who have been victimized and they are able to get this modality of therapy, they are 90% certain that they will not go on to victim. they are ninety percent certain that they will not go on to victimize as adults or higher or older teenagers. We only have two of those therapists in the city, and they only work with adults. We've had, in the last five years, case by case, we've had two teenage children that we have been able to refer to our problematic sexual behavior therapist in the community, only two. And I will say, our juvenile offenders have reached points of thirteen to fifteen percent per year. Those are juvenile offenders coming back and perpetrating on another juvenile. So we definitely need to work on that. I will say, in twenty twenty-three, we had eleven percent increase in our mental health services being rendered to our children and our caregivers. That's a huge increase, we've seen an increase over the last seven years since my tenure. However, eleven percent is huge, and we did that with two therapists. So in January of twenty twenty-four, God graced us, and we were able to hire two additional full-time therapists and one part-time therapist. Again, their modalities are trauma-focused, cognitive behavioral, and the EMDR. But with additional therapy, we can provide all of those mental health modalities. Which is exactly what our goal and our hope is. By increasing our space, we'll be able to hire anywhere from eight to ten additional therapists, for a total of eight to ten. We have five currently, so we can hire at least five more. We can include internships. Our current Program Director is a supervisor, and so she can supervise LPCs. I know there's a big initiative in this community, bringing about with the Behavioral Health Center and UTPB, bringing in students and getting them to stay in this community. So working with both of those entities to provide internships and practicums at our office is something that we've already started doing and we will continue to do. With this additional space and the capability of hiring additional therapists, we can accommodate sixteen to twenty-five clients per week, per therapist. So that's a potential of being able to provide a hundred and eighty to two hundred sessions, therapy sessions, weekly to these children and these caregivers who need it. It's not just the children who need it, it has to be a holistic approach. We can't expect a child to be abused, to get services at Harmony Home and go right back into the situation, because mom and dad don't understand why they need to change, and this therapy can help them change. So these are just some forms of the therapy that we do want to offer, the parent-child interaction, the play-art therapy, the problematic sexual behavior. And as time is determined, if we decide that there are other things that come about that our children need, that is a conversation that we can have at the state level, in the community level, and provide those trainings and get those mental health staff trained and ready to do what they need to do. Including with the mental health program, we're going to also have an additional forensic interview room. Right now, we have two. So we can provide twelve interviews per day for kids who make an outcry of abuse. We've had as many as fifteen in one day, and it happened on a very hot day in July, this summer, and our air conditioning broke this summer, and it happened to be on the very same day that all of those interviews were taking place. So you can imagine my two interviewers and my advocates and my staff running around with all of these children and all of these families in a non-air-conditioned building, one after another. It took its toll. And so with this, we're able to provide twelve, up to twelve a day, and have an additional forensic interview room. The onsite SANE exam, which we'd already talked about. And then conference space for our kids and our partners to come and talk about every case. On average, we talk about seven hundred cases per year. We have CPS in the room, we have law enforcement from both all modalities, whether it's ECISD police, Hector County Police Sheriff, Odessa Police Department, Medical Center Hospital, whoever. If they have a case that they've brought in, and they have a child that they're protecting and investigating, they get to come and we get to talk about that case in depth. What are the next steps? What is going on? Who's doing what with this kid? To ultimately ensure the best interest of these children and these families. And so, under the health initiative and the ARPA funding that you guys have received, we are asking that you pledge three hundred thousand dollars. It can be in one or over a pledge of three years, to help us provide the space and provide the needed therapy for these families and these children as we move forward. I will say, for the last forty-four years, this city has trusted us, trusted Harmony Home, trusted the Emergency Shelter Center to protect our kids. And our parents, our children, and our partners have continued to do that for the last thirty-one years. And so, that trust, I'm asking again from y'all, and I know that y'all already trust us, and y'all want to do whatever y'all can for the children and the community members. So allowing us to do what we do best, and it's protecting our kids. I talk a lot, but the lady that I want to bring up, her name is Angelina, and she's actually one of our clients. And I can't go anywhere without an impact statement. So, Angelina, would you come to the floor and give her another few minutes? And then we can ask, answer any questions that you may have.
Good afternoon, esteemed members of the City of Odessa City Council, and all those present today. My name is Angelina Aranda, and I stand before you, not only as a resident of our vibrant community, but also as a voice for the many silent witnesses of child abuse in our midst. It is an honor to share my journey and critical work being done by organizations like Harmony Home, to heal and support our most vulnerable citizens. Imagine living in a world where scars of child abuse are not just physical, but deeply mental and emotional, affecting the child and the other family members. A world where the aftermath of such abuse leaves invisible wounds that are often overlooked and under addressed. This is a stark reality for many families, underscoring the urgent need for mental health support, specifically tailored for survivors of child abuse and their loved ones. In my darkest hours, overshadowed by the turmoil of child abuse, I felt isolated, as if our pain was invisible to the world around me. The physical wounds were tangible, especially those suffered by my children. But it was our collective emotional scars woven from anxiety, fear, betrayal, and despair that cut the deepest. As a mother of four, finding ourselves without a safe haven was a distressing reality. Striving to maintain dignity, I applied for only the bare minimal of aid, yet faced discouragement with each denial letter. The point came when I could no longer shoulder the burden alone. Relocating to Odessa, thanks to a careful devise plan with my family, marked a turning point. It was Harmony Home that extended a lifeline, transforming our predicament into a journey of hope. This step, both daunting and liberating, introduced us to a support system that became our beacon of light. The counselors at Harmony Home, coupled with the unwavering prayers from our church family, began to mend the fractures in our lives. The mental distress that many children endure in the wake of our past experiences was heart-wrenching. Panic attacks, misbehavior, uncontrollable mood swings, and verbal altercations were daily battles that we faced together. The simplest of tasks, like getting to school on time or staying with family members while I ran errands, was insurmountable. I was often torn between the need of my four children and my responsibilities as an ER registration supervisor. Back in August of twenty nineteen, this juggling act reflected in our punctuality, with us being tardy to school about sixty percent of the time. But as the days unfolded at Harmony Home, the change was noticeable. I beam now with pride, sharing that this school here, tardiness is a rare occurrence. It just happened once. This is a testament, not just to improve time management, but to the profound healing that has taken place. My children's spirits have been reunited, nurtured by the trust and guidance they found in the compassionate professionals at Harmony Home. Their healing, though slow, allowed me the space to attend to my own mental health needs. Bit by bit, I assembled a new identity from the remnants of my shattered existence. This new self was not defined by victimhood, but by resilience, strength, and the steadfast spirit to thrive. Our journey from the shadows of child abuse into the light of hope and healing is a testament to the power of support and the steadfast strength of the human spirit. Our journey, though deeply personal, is far from unique. Across our community, many families grapple with the aftermath of child abuse, each carrying their own story of pain and resilience. The staggering statistics on child abuse only scratch the surface of this pervasive issue. Behind each number is a child, a family, struggling to reclaim a sense of normalcy and safety. Healing from child abuse is long and complex, requiring more than just immediate crisis intervention. It demands ongoing support, education, and resources, empowering survivors and their families to rebuild their lives. This is where the need of funding becomes critical. With adequate resources and your support, we can expand services like those offered by Harmony Home, ensuring that every child and family affected by abuse across... Sorry. Ensuring that every child and family affected by abuse has access to specialized care. They need to heal and thrive. Thank you.
Do y'all have any questions?
Counsel, Carrie, before we do that...
Yes.
Can you come up here? Can you go over, once again, the things that we have to do and can't do with the ARPA funds?
Yes. So, under the regulations for the ARPA funds, there are a select handful of categories that are allowable for us to use the funds. This would fall under the public health category, and more specifically subset, mental health. We have to expend the funds by a certain date as well, so we're working hard to make sure that we get the funds committed on time and spent in a timely manner as well.
So Carrie, real quick, you talked about a, like a three-year commitment over time. The council can't do that.
Okay.
Either we gotta commit it or we don't.
Okay.
If we don't, then we wind up...
Well, and when I say a commitment, this is a capital campaign. And so, it can be pledged over an amount of three years, but if it's a one-time, then that's okay too.
Okay. I just want to clarify that.
Yes.
And so, and I guess the definition of us committed when hand over the check, for us, I guess it's spent.
That would be amazing.
Yeah.
I would love that.
Counsel, do we want to have a discussion?
I have just one question.
Yes.
Carrie, the counseling and therapy that Harmony Homes provides is well-known. But I'm just not sure, do you have protective custody just as well? Any housing of the...
We do not house any of the children. What happens when a child makes an outcry of abuse? They come through for interviewing. We can not make those determinations, that is up to CPS and law enforcement. Law enforcement on the arrests made, CPS on what to do with the child, safety plans put in place. If during the interview, it's decided that there is no safe home or safe place for the children to go, at that moment in time, CPS makes that decision to remove those children. So we are the start of a...
Many families grapple with the aftermath of child abuse.
...support through with the children until they turn eighteen.
Carrying their own story of pain.
Thank you.
Ms. Bandit, when are we gonna, when are we doing the, are we doing it in a couple of weeks? Where are we committing the money?
So that will be tonight at our council meeting. Yes, we'll be making the allocations and voting on them.
Carrie, at six o'clock, we're going to have a discussion about those monies. And we'll go into that discussion tonight? And then we'll have the City Manager contact you.
Okay, thank you very much, yes, that's fine. And I'll be here at six o'clock too. So if there's any other questions, I would love to be able to answer anything, okay?
We'll do that, we'll see at six.
Thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We're going to move on to item ten. I see Max is anxious, ready to get up here, discuss the athletic facility use agreement. Mr. Reyes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mayor, Council. I was just kind of keeping you on the loop. I've been working closely with legal, and we've decided to try to revamp our facility use agreement across the board. We've met with all the sports organizations, associations at Slater Park last Tuesday, the sixth. And basically, we just got there and we're explaining what our commitment was to the programs, hearing their thoughts and issues, their concerns. Before we implement this, you know, we're going to definitely go out and try to do what we can on our side. John and I have already been out driving around, trying to see where we can put certain programs, their needs as far as goals, backstops, that we don't currently have. There's a lot of space, so I think that we're on a good route. Before we implement this, we wanted to share and see if we can get y'all some blessings.
What's your overall sentiment to organizations in utilizing underutilized facilities in Central and South and West Odessa, inside the city limits?
What are they, I'm sorry?
What's the sentiment among the organizations that showed up about utilizing underutilized facilities for practice and play that historically haven't been used in Central and South and Southwest Odessa?
Baseball and football, currently. Not even a space. They're bringing in all kinds of kids, or teams from everywhere. So we're just trying to figure out what works best for everybody, in what area. Obviously, we have more fields on the, on the south end that we've designated as, you know, good playing condition, practice facilities, maybe even a couple of full-size football fields that we haven't, that we haven't had. I did speak to the Soccer Association, and they're going to do something different this year. So we're going to have tons of space, we just got to make sure that we get what the organizations are needing.
How many organizations showed up and showed interest?
Actually, it was a pretty good turnout. We had baseball there, all three little leagues here. We had a couple of football organizations. We did have the VP for Soccer. Everybody was willing, they were understanding, we just had to explain it more in depth. In our opinion, they were all in. Just after we explained everything and knowing that this is actually in their benefit and not, you know, not the way it was going to be, or has been. So, everything was a good...
The organization understanding that the multi-use agreement does not give them the authority to use public facilities and to rent them out ahead.
Sublet, yes sir.
And then, you know, they're subleasing, which is something I know this council really hammered down, it still was ongoing.
Correct.
And so, it's not that it's abuse, the thing is, is that you're having one organization control a public facility that everybody pays for, and they're not being able to have access to it. And, and so, Mr. Reyes and John, they've been on it. They were already aware when I approached them to it. And so, I wanted them to make sure we emphasize that everybody gets to use the park. Everybody's going to have to get along, and they're going to have to work around each other. But ultimately, the city is in control of the scheduling, and only the city will be leasing those facilities.
Correct, and it kind of goes back to the saying that we had earlier on about taking Odessa back. We want to make sure that everything filters out of our office. That's what's happening across the board, across the country. If anything, you know, we're going to be able to document every player, every coach, every association, having us listed as a second insured. That way, if something does happen, you know, everybody will be covered. Rentals, any kind of questions are going to filter through our office, and then we're going to try our best to meet their needs.
Perfect, perfect. Counsel, any questions? I appreciate your Parks Department working with the organizations on field prep.
Yes, sir.
Definitely, surely needed. Those facilities, not their yard and their lawn. And they can mess up their yard and lawn, but it costs money when they mess up the cities.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
So I really appreciate you guys talking to them about that field prep. It really has been lacking in information and knowledge. Good job, just keep us updated and keep on doing what you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Max. We're going to move on to item eleven. And this is to discuss the real property where the Odessa College Downtown Park has been built, the Odessa College pursuant to a local government code section. Mr. Bigman?
Okay, and, and Mr. Jones will talk about this more, I believe, tonight in council. But at some point, there was a resolution passed to donate what I believe was the property where the old OA building was to Odessa College to build a park. And it was done through resolution, and it can't be. It's kind of one of those things, we didn't complete it. And it's probably a good thing we didn't, because now, we can go back and do it correctly through an ordinance. And I'd say, Mr. Jones will talk about that a little bit more tonight. But that's what this is. We, in a previous council, went through and said, okay, we're going to donate this land to Odessa College. Passed resolution, the deed and all wasn't carried through. all wasn't carried through, and then as legal looked through it, we can't do it through a resolution to begin with, so we're going to have to back up and do it the correct way. There's a lot of words to say. We're going to do it right.
We're going to do it over again.
Create the CAF again.
So it has to be an ordinance, is what you're saying?
It's got to be an ordinance. So we're looking at the CAF over again.
Just curious, just curious, if something had happened to a citizen, maybe falling because of some negligent...
It's our property.
It's our property?
Yeah.
They would not have been Odessa colleges?
No.
Biscuit after.
We're working on it.
It is a liability issue.
Well, nobody, nobody will insure it. That's right, John. Neither of us can insure it because...
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Because we don't, we don't own the things that Odessa College has built there.
Put on it, yeah.
They don't own the property, so it's... We could probably insure it, but we'd have to insure the land. They'd have to insure good liability on that equipment.
Yeah, it gets complicated.
Yes, real quick.
Counsel, any other questions on that? It's clear as mud.
Pretty clear.
Mr. Bigma, you want to go on on item twelve to discuss the hundred thousand for University of Premier Basin?
The next one was, again, in a previous council, there was an anonymous donor that gave money for some different purposes, and one purpose was hundred thousand dollars to UTPB, and we want to do that. It hadn't been done up to this point. We have the money still, and we need to make that.
So it was never actually given to UTPB?
Correct.
It was next to the check.
Wow, okay.
Correct.
You don't want to go sit in the safe?
It just, it's another thing that, as we're digging, we're, we're wanting to make sure we carry through with all of our obligations, and this is one of...
Wow, okay.
Unless they don't want, no, I'm just joking.
I don't think Sandy will turn her down.
Counsel, any other questions on item twelve?
I have a question. That's something that we found, UTPB didn't come to us asking for the money.
Something we found we're doing because we said, we said we would.
And what about the private donor, a per, private donor? This person, this person made, wrote a check to Odessa City, City of Odessa. Did it ever clear to the bank if it was just sitting there or...
It went into our account, and the check's not just sitting there. It was a bigger, and Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, it was a check for more than a hundred thousand.
For two hundred fifty thousand dollars, the private donor.
The other parts of it to where they needed to go, but this part never got committed to UTPB, and we're going to get that taken care of.
It was, in, in, in the request, it was specific, two specific departments were supposed to get money. They're standing over in the corner. Now, the other, what was left over, council committed to UTPB.
Right.
Now, I can't answer if you wind up getting it, and, but we knew that the hundred thousand hadn't been committed, and so this is part of the task force cleaning it up.
Okay.
And so, but it was left up to the city to do whatever was left over, what we wished in this council, pushed it right back into UTPB for, this is when the split happened, and it was for the...
For the goalpost.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, sir.
And so, it's just, it's just, it's a housekeeping issue that has just been neglected, and we're correcting and doing it right.
Okay.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to item thirteen, and I know everybody's excited about this one.
Yes.
This goes amending chapter two of the City of Odessa Code Ordinance entitled Animal Control. Mr. Jones.
So Mayor, Counsel, what we're doing here, right now, in the City of Odessa, you can have four dogs or cats. So this is proposing to move those from four to six on, on each premises. So you'd have, they have to have three dogs, three cats, instead of four. So that's what we're proposing here. And of course, to spay or neuter, they need to be older than four months. I understand from veterinarians, they need to at least be six months old before you can actually spay or neuter them. That's when they're old enough to be spayed or neutered.
We're doing six or four?
We're going to six months.
Six months, okay.
Six months, yes, sir. And then, of course, we've, we've also talked about the disposal of impounded dogs and cats, and then what we're looking at here is actually transferring the animals to a humane organization, as long as that humane organization agrees to vaccinate and sterilize the animal. And what they would also do is notify the animal control with a copy of the veterinarian certificate within one month after the transfer. So we're just trying to help control the pet population.
Okay.
That's all we're doing. It's just very, very simple.
I got a question. Has, in the ordinance, has it always been four?
Always been four.
Because there's, there were some rumors out there that we changed it from six to four, but we never did. It's always been a, always been a four, right?
To my knowledge, no, it's always been four.
So we're giving the pet owners the ability to gain two more pets?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
So it could be a combination of three cats, three dogs, or...
Right.
But it's just six?
Six, total six. So you could, you could have one dog and five cats. But I know you've got two dogs.
I know there's somebody out there that has six pets. We're getting pretty near and close with it.
But of course, they have to be spayed, neutered.
Do rabbits and birds count?
No, just dogs and cats.
You can have twenty, you can have twenty birds if you want to.
And I will, I will confirm, I did get several calls from the veterinarians that were very upset, and I guess I didn't pay enough attention on the four months. And so they were doing lots of paperwork and lots of extra added stuff that apparently we caused, so we were fixing that problem.
We heard you, and we responded.
Because the animals aren't developed to be spayed or neutered at four months. So we're trying to correct our mistakes. That's what we're doing here.
I'll say too that Kelly made a, a good point, and that is that even if we move it to six, there will be a vet out there that says, I can't do it to seven, but you're really taking, you're taking in the majority of the problem. In addition to that, she said that we, we met and we talked, and gave an okay, but with the condition that the council will hold the line on this, on the animal ordinances. No more.
I agree. Counselors, we have a consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Seeing that there's more business before this council, I have a motion to adjourn by council member Swann, second by council member Vasquez, all in favor, indicating by saying aye, opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passed, members, we are adjourned, and we will...